I'm making this announcement in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, being Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975 laws of the state of New Jersey. The Planning Board Secretary has prepared a schedule of the meeting of the Planning Board of the Borough of Kenilworth for the year 2020 and has posted a true copy of this schedule on the bulletin board located at the front entrance of Borough Hall and has now true copies of this schedule to the local source, Star Ledger, and it is maintaining a copy of this schedule in Borough Hall. Accordingly, this notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied in regards to this meeting. Can we all stand up for fledgeholders?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Passarna.
Here.
Mr. Gomaldi.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
Mr. Calella.
Here.
Mr. Scudari.
Here.
And Mr. Herbalero.
Here.
Okay, can you have a motion to approve the November 14 minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Gomaldi, second by Mr. Calella, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so move. Hold on one second. Okay, we also need a motion for the approval of our special meeting held on November 25, 2019, so. Second by Mr. Maggio, second by Mr. Gomaldi, all in favor?
Aye.
Kathy, any communications?
We have a resignation letter from Mr. Ryan Jones, that's all.
All right, I did see that, and Mr. Jones helped us out quite a bit on the board, and we're very sorry to see him go, but I'm sure he'll be back when he's ready. Okay, resolution, application 6-19379, Ventos USA. Anyone here from Ventos tonight? Seeing none, Mr. Regal?
This is the application that we heard at our most recent meeting, special meeting, for the proposed warehouse use on 20 Bowery Avenue, use variance approval, preliminary and final site plan approval, and the waiver approval. The Board approved it with a number of conditions which I've set forth in the resolution. There are no other questions, it should be all laid out there.
Okay, the only addition to that, that night, we talked about having our two professionals that the Board hired on that evening to be a part of the, I guess you would call it the civil plan, based on the tank going into the ground, and I made a phone call to the attorney, our Board Attorney, Mr. Regal, stating that it wasn't necessary to copy Mr. Pringle and Mr., what was his name?
Sagendorf.
Sagendorf. Those are the two professionals that we hired, because our engineer and our planner are perfectly capable to review those documents. So that's the only thing that's addressed in there, but not by name.
Yeah, I mentioned that specifically in condition number eight, I refer, that will be, that plan would refer to Borough officials rather than outside.
Any questions on resolutions? Seeing none, motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Gomaldi, second by Mr. Maggio. Roll call, please.
Mr. Passarna.
Yes.
Mr. Gomaldi.
Yes.
Mr. Maggio.
Yes.
Mr. Calella.
Yes.
And Mr. Scudari.
Yes.
Kathy, was the people you just called the people that we hear that can do? Okay, thank you. Okay, so here we are. Old business, any old business? Seeing none, thank goodness. New business, zoning appeal number four, Kenilworth Pizza LLC. Mr. Goodman, it's up to you. Kathy, we're good with notice and publication?
Yes.
Thank you.
Gary Goodman, on behalf of the applicant, and that's Kenilworth Pizza, and they trade as Ava's Kitchen and Bar. We're here initially appealing the zoning officer's decision that says that we have to come before you for site plan approval and a parking variance. As you all know, your existence, as a zoning board, is basically the function of property owners surrendering their rights. There's a bundle of rights that all property owners have, they give up some of those, and those rights are to use the property in a way that the community wants it to be utilized. And I think it's in the community's best interest to have efficient ways of making determinations as to how these uses are done. In your particular case, the person who drafted your zoning and land use ordinance put in specific examples of ways in which there can be an efficient process by which people can move in and out of your town. For example, under 120-9.1C, called exemptions, it says, "All applications which involve a change in tenancy, but not a change in use, as herein defined, and/or minor alterations to the site or to one or more of the building elevations shall not be required to obtain a site plan of approval. The zoning officer shall issue a zoning permit. The zoning officer desires further consultation. The Borough Planner or Borough Engineer may be consulted." In this particular case here, we have a sub shop which is no longer functioning, and we have Ava's Kitchen wanting to expand into that. So there has to be a determination as to whether or not that use is similar, and pursuant to your land use ordinance, we have eateries, and whether it's a sub shop or whether you're ordering pizza, that seems to have met that criteria. With regard to the square footage, the square footage of the sub shop was 479 square foot, and the expansion of Ava's Kitchen will also be 479 square foot. There is a formula by which you ascertain the amount of parking, and in this particular case, when the sub shop came in, they needed seven spaces, and the proposed eatery, expansion of Ava's Kitchen, will be 24 seats requiring eight seats. However, another, I think, very wise portion of your land use ordinance, that is 120-27.4E, specifically says, "Non-residential properties in the BD Boulevard Downtown District between 18th and 24th Street inclusive shall provide one-half of the required parking spaces per this section. This measure has been adopted as an economic development policy and shall remain in effect until the Borough Mayor and Council choose to reinstate the normal standards." So apparently, in your community, you have taken note of the desire on the part of the community, as evidenced by their elected officials, to make sure that your core economic area, which is the Boulevard, remains prosperous and remains with tenants. And in order to do that, you have provided a mechanism by which parking will be relaxed until the Mayor and Council decide that they no longer want that. I take it that right now, this policy is still in effect, and therefore, the eight parking spaces that were required are now being reduced to four. And since we, since we being the sub shop, when it was in existence, qualified as having seven, and since my arithmetic tells me that four is less than seven, I think we are in compliance with that. So our basic application in appealing the zoning officer's decision is to say that this is the perfect example of a situation where a zoning permit should have been issued in order to expedite the filling of vacancies and the continuation of a more prosperous and viable downtown. In this particular case, this sub shop, I believe, has been vacant for a year, and I don't think that does the applicant, it doesn't do the community any good, his plans have been in, and we are here before you to ask you to allow a zoning permit to be issued so that he can expand. In my notice provision, I did notice for site plan approval and variance if this Board feels that we are not in, not correct in appealing this decision. So initially, I offer to you our request that you review the facts as presented and authorize a zoning permit to be issued so that Ava's Kitchen can expand.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Are you finished at this point, for now?
For this portion of the hearing.
All right, I'd like to ask our attorney to swear in our professionals, and Robert Herbert as our zoning officer.
All right. Where's Bob?
He's right behind you.
Oh, Bob. Kevin O'Brien, our planner, Christian Quayle, our engineer, Bob Herbert, our zoning officer. Gentlemen, with regard to this application, do you swear your testimony and comment, show me the truth?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Goodman, unless you have a concern, what I would like to do is to call our zoning officer up first, just so he can indicate to the Board what he did and why he did it. And then you can certainly question him, and then we can have our consultants' comment, and if you have any other witnesses, if you need to go that far, then we'll go that far. But I think we should focus on the appeal now, rather than variances or site plans or anything like that. Let's just keep it, keep it focused. And Bob Herbert, watch, come on up. You're familiar with this, you're under oath, just explain to the Board as directly as you can what the applicant, what you think the applicant is seeking and why you initially did this.
Mr. Herbert, as a formality, state your name and your position here in the town, for the record.
For the record, my name is Robert Herbert, I am the zoning officer for the Borough of Kenilworth.
Thank you. It's all your shares. Okay. And please, Robert, for the, we can't hear too good, so speak up.
Speak up.
Speak up.
All right. I received an application from Mr. Grino back in August 20th of 2019. He submitted a set of plans with no parking diagram or calculations of this location. Sorry, I reviewed the plans, and I saw on the plans that he was proposing 24 seats. So from there, I did my research in our land use ordinance and in our definition book of a restaurant, and regarding the sub shop, if that falls under a restaurant, and it does, but as a takeout restaurant. But my number one reason why I denied it was due to our ordinance 120-9.1, Article 9, Administration Procedures, and Article C, exemptions. As Mr. Goodman read Article 1, which has a lot of truth to it, but the next article, which is CA, I would like to have the opportunity to read this to the Board, and I believe...
Not a problem, Robert, I think Mr. Goodman read 1-20-91C, am I correct?
That is correct.
That's the exemptions.
Right, and there's parts, C1, then C-A.
So you want to go further to C1 and C-A?
Yes, right, the next section under 1 is 1A, okay? And it reads, I believe we forward a copy to all Board members, you should have it in your paperwork, says, "A change of use from one permitted commercial use to another permitted commercial use in the BD Boulevard Downtown Zone shall be exempt from a site plan approval, comma, provided that the gross square footage of the proposed establishment is equal to or less than 1,200 square feet, and that all required parking is provided." That all required parking is provided. And then, period, and then it says, "Restaurants are not eligible for this exemption." So for that reason, that was my first reason for denying this application. If we're going to classify it as a restaurant with seating, which our definition book does say that, he needs to come for a site plan, and if he doesn't have enough parking, he needs a variance. And what I know of the property, this particular building's been around many, many years, but it does not have any on-site parking. The parking lot in the rear of that building, number 1 Boulevard, and the adjoining properties, if you guys aren't familiar, is Capri Pizza, the Senior Center, Dunkin' Donuts, a lawyer's office, a foot doctor's office, a contractor storefront. All except for the contractor storefront has separate additional parking. All those other spaces, the parking lot in the rear of these buildings, is the Borough's property. Nobody else has any parking there, except for the Senior Center, because it's on the Borough property. I have a tax map here that I can show you the location of that. So that's why we're forth here today, and I would like to share with this Board that Ava Pizza is not the only tenant in this building, it's a multi-use building. We have a French restaurant adjoining that. To the right of that used to be a formal sub shop, which was only a takeout only, no seating once, not at all, okay? Takeout only. Next to that was a barber shop, that's all on the ground floor. Now, according to the tax records and talking to the tax assessor, the second floor had three apartments. I did not have access to the apartments, but I'm assuming that one of the apartments was converted to a real estate office, because I did get access there, and that's about 800 square feet. So that would leave two more apartments on the second floor. That's all in a building that has no parking. And due to our parking calculations with a restaurant, that could be for every, for every three seats, you need so many parking spaces. I agree with the new ordinance to try to be more business friendly, to cut the required parking in half in the downtown business district, if it qualifies. But as I said earlier in my statement, I did not get any parking calculations or any plan with a breakdown of all these uses. And I did a little further investigation, and I walked over by the businesses, the French restaurant has 30 seats, the Avon Restaurant has 50 seats as of now, they propose an additional 24, which is 74. And you have a takeout pizzeria, you have a barber shop with three seats, I believe is in it, with two barbers, that's additional parking. And then whatever is needed for the office space and for the apartments upstairs, it depends how many bedrooms, I don't have access to that information. So it needs quite a few parking spaces, and I feel that under our ordinance, it's a restaurant, it requires an automatic site plan, and B, does it meet the parking requirements for our ordinance? That's pretty much why I made my decision. I would like to, if this Board doesn't know the difference between a restaurant and a takeout, takeout restaurant, I would like to cite that under our definition book, if possible.
You have the floor, Robert, but I have a lot of things to go over with you.
Okay. The other thing that I wanted to share with you, if you'll give me a second, to find it here in my folder, before I... In our ordinance book, where it says the parking requirements, and you go down to restaurants, let me get the, that's 120-27.4, 7, P and Q. P states, "Restaurant predominantly seating, full service, one space per three seats." He's proposing additional 24 to expand his existing restaurant, which would give him 74. Q says, "Restaurants, all others, one space per 75 square feet gross floor area, or one space per three seats, whichever is greater." So the sub shop, because it was a takeout, falls under, it's a restaurant, but it falls under a different classification, and...
What classification was that?
Well, the takeout is similar to a drive-through or a drive-in, and there is some negative impacts with these type of things. And the ordinance requires a different parking requirement for a takeout restaurant than for a seating restaurant, and that's the difference.
Was the sub shop listed as a takeout restaurant?
Yeah.
In their, in their, in their application? Do you know that, Kevin? Was it listed as a takeout, or was it listed as a restaurant, or was it listed as a sub shop?
To my recollection, there were seats in the sub shop.
There were. There were four seats.
So there were, it was both seating and takeout, and I would think that whenever it came in, somebody would probably put it under the restaurant all others, because it's probably predominantly or halfway takeout.
Okay.
And that is one space per 75 square feet, or one space per three seats, whichever is greater. So in that particular case, it would have been one space per 75 square feet, which comes to six or seven spaces. So at the time that that was put in, it should have met those parking requirements.
Okay. Go on.
Okay. With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I disagree with you that there was four seats.
With seats?
Yes, that there was four seats in that location.
Okay.
I think your physique is a little better shape than mine, I remember many years, you keep yourself healthy. I'm a frequent flyer at Johnny's Sub Shop.
That's what I agree with you on, okay.
Right, all right. And there was no seating there, believe me, for many years, there was no seating there.
Okay.
You know, all right. I would like to take this opportunity, and then this will end my testimony, unless you guys have some questions for me. I would like to cite to you... Okay, here we are. First of all, what I'm reading from you is a book called "The Latest Illustration Book of Development and Definitions" by Mr. Harvey Moskowitz and Carl Lindablu. And under our ordinance, Part 3, it says, "The zoning officer," whoever that may be, for the Borough of Kenilworth, "has the authority to help make his decision to refer to this booklet." So I want to assure this Board and our local business owner, I'm very thorough when I get an application in, no matter if it's residential, commercial, or industrial, and before I make my final, my decision, I use all my resources, because sometimes a resource, like this definition book, could make you change your mind on the language of your local ordinance. So I am very thorough, I do my homework before I approve or I deny. And in this case, knowing that the building, as long as it's been there, and their parking situation, I said I better cross all my Ts and dot my Is. So I went to this book, and I'd like to cite to you guys, "The Definition of a Restaurant", and in this book, when they give you a definition, they also give you a comment for an example. "A restaurant is an establishment where food and drinks are prepared and served and consumed mostly within principal buildings." Also, you can look up restaurant, takeout, retail food establishments. Under comments for a restaurant, "A restaurant may have limited forms of musical entertainment to accompany the dining experience. However, restaurants that provide dancing and stage shows are nightclubs," and it refers you to nightclubs. So if you go to, referring back to the vacant space, that was a formal sub shop, "A takeout is an establishment where food or beverages are sold in a form ready for consumption, where all or significant part of the consumption takes place outside the confines of the restaurant, and where ordering a pickup of food may take place from an automobile." Under their comments, which I asked this Board, please pay close attention, "Takeout restaurants also encompass restaurants that sell food from drive-up windows. One of the zoning problems with these types of restaurants occurs, when tables are added for on-premises consumption of food, the additional parking required is often not available or otherwise inadequate. And in addition, since the use of a drive-up or pickup lane, circulation, stacking, safety are major consideration." That's the additional comments there. One of my concerns as, as the zoning officer, and the way the ordinances are written, and due to that we have multiple uses in this building, I have to look at for the interest of our downtown, downtown business district, and how does it, how does this additional seating with insufficient parking impacts the other adjoining properties in the area? Because if you don't have no parking on site, you got to use the public parking. So if Ava is the only restaurant area that has 74 seats, and other businesses don't have nowhere near that, where does those customers park when they come? You know, it may, it may, as much as positive, cutting the parking in half, but allowing additional parking to fit this requirement may impact the other businesses, and those places might become vacant. And with all those facts, what I read here, I just feel that I did my job, I interpreted the ordinance the way it was written, and my job is I have to make a decision. My decision is that it needs to go to this Board for a site plan, with that, you know, that they're exempt restaurants, and that it requires a variance for insufficient parking. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Robert.
You're welcome.
So let me, let me, let me just backtrack a little bit. First of all, you don't have to validate to me your credentials, I think you do a great job. However, having said that, I also think that the, the book that we read from each and every day for these ordinances are subject to interpretation at particular times. We could rule one way or another, based on how one reads it. I could say, "Oh my God," and/or, "Oh my God," you know, we could look at it in that specific manner. However, I heard you recite from C1A, C1, I heard Mr. Goodman talk about 1C is the exemption. And if you go back and forth to each one of those paragraphs, it's a ping pong match. Which one do you want to digest, and which one do you want to grab your information from? If you read it from the second paragraph, you could eliminate the first. If you read it from the first paragraph, you could eliminate it from the second. I also heard you tell me that, or tell this Board, that you looked into La Rendezvous and the other restaurants and everything else that's going around, but that's not what I'm here to listen to tonight. There were already establishments, I can't concern, I can concern myself with it, but I can't hear what is already in place. But I do know you're trying to protect what's going to happen if this should be approved. So that I can appreciate, but I can't look at it like, "Oh my God, La Rendezvous already has 60, 60 chairs, Ava's has 74." I can't look at that. I have to look at what is the best means and methods for this establishment. I do see that it has 472 square feet in that establishment, and I also see that, to me, it looks like a change of tenancy and not a change of use. So in a change of tenancy, I would be seeing that a variance would be necessary. However, that's just where I'm seeing this go at this point. But do I think you're very thorough? Absolutely, I think you did your job perfectly. Now it's subject to interpretation, and I'd like to hear from our planner and some of our Board members, and you could also ask Mr. Herbert some questions.
Can I ask Mr. Herbert a question?
Sure.
Did you state, when you, we're talking about the parking lot behind you. Did you say that this building has X amount of spots designated to it, and the rest is Kenilworth property, or that there are no parking spots designated to this property?
I said there is no parking spaces designated to this property. I did say the senior building has parking, and the contractor, at the end...
He has his own little lot.
Has his own little lot, yes.
But otherwise, the entire lot is just public parking. But otherwise, the entire lot is just public parking?
That is correct. It's, it's the borough's property.
And we can't, if it's borough's property and it's been borough's property for ever and a day, we can't really designate our public spots to private spaces, can we?
What I understand in law is no, but it is public parking, so I guess it's first come, first served.
Okay. Frank, you on here?
Well, when you, when we're talking about the eight spots required or seven spots required in the previous testimony and your, and your testimony, where, where are the parking spaces that they're providing coming from then?
I don't know because I never received a parking diagram, which is required by ordinance to give you parking calculations. And if it's a mixed-use building, each individual space needs to be on that, that parking form. I never received it.
So, so Robert, wouldn't you agree with the way our borough is set up and the way our downtown is set up? If we were not somewhat lenient to the store owners on our boulevard, there'd be no stores at all because we can't provide parking for everyone that's out there. We can't, we can't give these people parking. We'd have, we'd have no downtown district.
I agree, Mr. Chairman. And if I may remind you, in 2018, this board right here.
Right here.
Okay. Adopted an ordinance, the 121 9.1, saying, let's leave some business district relief because we know we have a parking issue. And if the spaces, if it's a permitted use, if it's a change of use, change of tendency, if it's a permitted use, and it's 1,200 square feet or less, and it meets the parking requirements, that's the language in the ordinance that I read. That's what, let me finish.
Right.
That's what was written. And you guys adopted that ordinance, and at the end of that ordinance, you clearly said restaurants are not included.
Correct.
In this.
But that's the ambiguities of the statement that you're reading because now.
No, not the statement. I'm reading the ordinance.
I don't want to hang up on, on, on little words, Bob, because we know each other pretty well.
Yeah.
The thing is, at this point, if you were to take a shoe store and make it a restaurant, that 1,200 square feet would be impacted like that. There'd be no thought about it, that's a variance. Boom, it's there. But you're taking something in kind, and we're kind of splitting the hair here. So that's the only reason why I'm, you know, having a dialogue back and forth because, again, if it was anything else, it was a stationary store, you want to make it a restaurant, I would look at it a lot differently than I'm looking at it now.
And I, and I'm listening and I hear what you say.
Go on, are we over? We done?
No, no, we're not, sir. Unfortunately, you've known me long enough.
That's point of information, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We have both public presence and we are on a visual record. This board does not pass legislation, this board has no authority to do so. That is an action that can only be taken by the Borough Council.
Correct. Thank you for the clarification. Yes, if I may. Mr. Ramali.
Well, let's, either one of you can go first.
Can I respond to the, to the chairman when he, when he stated? Due respect to you, I heard what you said loud and clear. I am the appointed zoning officer. I'm not, I have to interpret the ordinance, and my job is to enforce the ordinances that are passed and approved by mayor and council. And that's what's in our 120 section. So I'm not disagreeing with you, but I had the job to do, and my job is to follow the ordinance. And that's all I was doing, and that's why I denied it. And I believe that's why we're here today. And I think the board has to make that decision on if you want to overturn my decision for whatever reasons you want to.
Absolutely. I came over to overturn your decision. This board has to overturn it if they deem it so. But my point is, I'm just giving you, I heard your side, I'm just trying to, you know, understand why you're, you denied it. I was trying to tell you why that I thought there may be a little other caveat here that you can look at. I just wanted to entertain you with that. Mr. Ramali?
My answer is, I just follow the ordinance and says restaurants are exempt.
The only thing, now, getting to definitions and me being more from the building end rather than the civil, civil end, if I was presented with Mr. Subs, which was forever before the money and Johnny's, it would be a mercantile business. By the International Building Code, it'd be a mercantile business. You come in, you deposit goods and services, and you leave. I wouldn't assume this to be an assembly or a restaurant use. By definition of the building code, it would be mercantile. By stretch, it could be business, but it would be those definitions, not, it wouldn't be an A2, an A3, a restaurant use from a building code standpoint. So just from a background of that view of what was there, we are doing a change of use. As far as seats go, I've been in that restaurant since, you know, I crashed my Schwinn, it's nine different parked cars there before we got to there. The seats mainly were, you sat on the window sill.
On the window.
Next to the Pac-Man.
Yeah.
Later on, if some seats showed up, you know, things come along with the bread truck. We all know that. But just from the point of building, building code, it would have been a mercantile business. And I'd like our professionals to let me know.
Mr. Oberlin?
The building code, architectural standards, unfortunately have no business in zoning. Zoning is specifically defining and allocating uses by their practical use rather than from a building standpoint or code standpoint. So the sub shop was a restaurant, Ava's is a restaurant. The sub shop could be seen as a takeout restaurant, which doesn't matter in the code except for a parking calculation. That's the only distinction between restaurant and takeout. I know that it's, it's odd because we have so many different codes and so many different ways of looking at things, and each world appears to be a silo unto itself. So you've got the architecture, you've got the building code, then you've got the zoning work, and they're all different. So I can't explain it, I can only say that that is so.
Well, I'd ask you, it's the bakery on 22nd Street on the opposite side of the Boulevard. Is that a restaurant?
That is a takeout restaurant. And the distinction there is there's food.
So anybody from this board have any questions for Mr. Herbert? So the difference between a takeout restaurant and a restaurant in this case would only really be one seat, correct? Is that what we're getting at? If it was a takeout, it would be seven, we figure six or seven. 24 seats would be eight parking spots required, right? So the parking spots.
Well, for that, for that particular space, but now it's not a separate space. It's an expansion of an existing restaurant. So you have to take all the seats in the calculation. Doesn't have its own entrance. It, it's connected to the existing establishment, which is very nice.
And the reason that Ava's was allowed to occupy the first space was because it was replacing the existing restaurant? Is that what we're originally?
It was a, it was a bar, restaurant together, and they came to this board for an application to change the facade. That's correct.
So in that case, it was just a change of tendency?
Yes.
Chairman, and again, I'm only doing this for clarity. If this becomes, which this, when it's connected to the main portion of Ava's, at the end result, and I apologize if this was testified to, will the overall restaurant be over 1,200 square feet?
Yes, it'll be, the existing restaurant is 24, so 2,436 square feet.
So wouldn't that kick this property down of that exemption? Because this, this place has got to operate as one facility. It's not going to get a separate liberalizing warrant. It's one facility. It's no longer 1,200 square foot.
Well, I think we need to hear from the attorney again about that, how that is going to be set up. Mr. Goodman, is that, is that going to have the front door entrance where you're going to have takeout? Oh, I'm sorry, Robert, I just called Mr. Goodman up to, to help us out with this. Will that, will that be an entrance from the front there where people are going to come in and, and get things and purchase from the front? Or are they purchasing from the Ava side?
The, the room in question is going to have the front door, which is on the Boulevard. People will be able to enter and exit from that door. Basically, the applicant, if asked, will testify that he's looking for that room to function as a private room. If somebody wanted to have a meeting, if somebody wanted to have a, a social event, that room could be separated from the noise that you generally associate with an open restaurant bar. So it's going to function ancillary to the restaurant that now exists, but it though, you know, it's a, it basically functions as a space that's ancillary to Ava's, but that will be used for specifically private parties or social events or meetings.
If I may, but it'll be a single use? It'll be a single establishment?
It'll, yeah, it'll be part of Ava's, yes. In order to elucidate some of the questions, the architect who is here this evening in, in the event that we go to the variance or site plan, took some pictures of the place that she was going to renovate. And she can testify and show you from her phone pictures that there were tables in 2018 that people were sitting at and eating. And you buy a food, sit down at the table, sounds like a restaurant.
Okay. Kevin, can you add to that?
Yes, Chairman. Did you want me to discuss my report at this point?
Yes, please.
Thank you. When I initially looked at this back, I believe in June, I was asked for my opinion by our zoning officers to whether or not a site plan approval was required.
Do you have a cop give that report, Mr. Goodman? Do you have a cop give the report instead of Mr. Herbert?
Whether or not it needed a site plan and/or a use parking variance. I looked at it and I relooked at it prior to last week, my latest report, which incorporated the first one, is now dated the 2nd of December. That was issued last week. Because the sub shop was a restaurant, and because Ava's is a restaurant, and the expansion into the sub shop is for a restaurant, I felt that there was no change in use.
Because what you're telling me, your professional opinion, is that the sub shop was a restaurant, considered a restaurant?
Correct.
Okay. Ava's is definitely a restaurant.
Correct.
And that was a change in tendency, not a change in use. Now we have an independent, separate entity, which is also a restaurant. That's been there for years.
Correct. Now, there's a subset between a takeout restaurant and a sit-down restaurant, but our only difference in our ordinance is a matter of parking practices. And because I saw this as a change in tendency and not a change in use, I advised at that time that I thought a minor site, that a administrative exemption was appropriate in this case. After that, our zoning officer denied the application based upon a lack of parking. I looked at that site, I looked at the records, I looked at previous resolutions, including our most recent one, which was dated July 13th of 2017, for the Ava's on 21st Street. Minor site plan approval was granted. There was no mention of a parking variance. The zoning officer at that time did not flag this for a parking variance.
When was that?
This is July 13th, 2017.
And who approved that? Was that Frank?
That was, this board approved a minor site plan.
Okay.
And we approved renovations to that site.
Okay.
At no time did parking come up in this resolution or in that application, nor was it, was the application, nor was the zoning permit denied for lack of parking.
Excuse me, Robert, were you the zoning officer at that time?
2017?
Yes. Okay. So you didn't have issue with it back then?
I don't think I, I saw it. I think back then, if it was going to the board, they were going, they weren't submitting a zoning permit, they were just applying, you know, for a site plan because of the facade change. I don't remember seeing a zoning application, you know, maybe they did. If Mr. Oberlin has a copy of that, I'd like to see it. I don't recall it ever coming in front of me. I just remember being here for a hearing, just going for a site plan because of changes of the facade. And it was a bar and a restaurant, and it had X amount of seats. And at one time, I guess it was approved. So again, I didn't see any plans with seating or anything like that. If I did, I probably would have questioned it because the parking requirements are the parking requirements by our ordinance.
I am unaware of what our zoning officer did in this particular case. I do know that our standard procedure for processing applications is for the zoning officer to review all applications as they come in and decide whether or not a zoning permit is allowed or whether it's denied. Under normal procedures, and I cannot speak as to what happened because I don't know, but under our normal procedures, this should have come in, a zoning permit would have been denied because a minor site plan was required and the zoning officers obtained it. So in 2017, we did not require parking. This is, and I'm looking back more at history here, this entire building is not known. This has been here, I'm guessing, since at least the 40s or 50s. At some point in that track record, site plan approvals were given by this borough and parking was supplied or parking was addressed as part of those site plan approvals. There is no private parking behind this, behind this building. It is a borough parking lot. Did at the time of the site plan approvals, the original ones, did that board take into consideration that the public parking would serve as the parking for this building? Because if it did not, not one of the businesses in that building complies with the ordinance.
Exactly. It was my point earlier.
So when I looked at it, I felt that we should not be correcting this now in 2019. This, this situation has been there for 60 or 70 years. Our predecessors at some point allowed this to happen or would not be there. They comply with the ordinance at the time, whatever that was, and if parking was required, they had to provide it somehow. That was taken care of in their site plan. And if parking was not required at that time, then these uses are grandfathered in because the building has not changed, and they met the code at the time. So that is my thinking in my December the 2nd discussion with the board, that I do not feel that a parking variance is required because I believe that the parking has been provided somehow or other over a period of time. And that because there is no parking variance, in my opinion, and because this is a change in tendency from one use to a same use, that an administrative site plan, administrative site plan approval can be given by the zoning officer in this case and based upon that. Or in the alternate, since we are here, I would ask Mr. Ragoe to correct me if I'm wrong, possibly this board, should they decide that this appeal is warranted, then this board, I think Mr. Ragoe would then have the opportunity to pass a minor site plan, should they wish? Or would it have to go back to the zoning officer?
In the context of an appeal?
Right.
I don't know if we. I don't know if we would want to be in the position of possibly considering a site plan approval with regard to an appeal. I know I heard that, I heard that a variance and a minor site plan were also noticed, I don't know, but I want to deal with the appeal first. I don't know if a formal application for a variance and a site plan has been received, that the escrow's been paid for that. I think, I thought we're only dealing with an appeal tonight. So your position is, it's a change in tendency, the parking has been what it's been for many, many years, and did you also mention that there are only four extra parking spaces required as opposed to seven?
No, because this application does not meet the economic development hardship, they need eight spaces.
Eight.
And my point about the site plan approval was just to figure out what the end game of all this is. So then I suppose that it would have to go, should this board advance the appeal, then it would have to go back to the zoning officer at the direction of this board.
In the event the board grants the appeal, it would be back, the board would be saying what's proposed is permitted because it's a change in tendency and because there's no parking variance required, yeah. That would be the upshot of what we're doing. And I think the issue is the parking. Bob thought that they were short on parking, and he felt there was a site plan required because he thought it was not a change in tendency, more a change in use. So where we are now is... Back at square one. Well, when you think about it, right now, we have to make a determination, if it's a change in tendency, it's a, you know...
Well, I don't see how, you know, I don't see how we can, that was a reason for my question before, as far as where was the parking going to come from anyway? So really, the question is, if we can talk about whether or not it's a change in use or not. If it's just a change in tendency, if we can decide on that, then, you know, I would say we grant the appeal would be the problem. Not that, you know, I'm not there, I'm just saying, that would be really the only argument we, as far as I can see it, that we have to discuss.
Yeah, and I think that's the pipe I would like to go down at this point, before I go too much further. Christian, do you have anything to add to this?
Yes, I do.
Christian is our new dear.
Okay. I'm reading from the ordinance of Off-Street Parking Schedule where everyone's been discussing the number of spaces required, where the restaurant is listed as predominantly seating, full service, one space per three seats, which Kevin said. The takeout, it's listed under Restaurants All Up, and that's listed as one space per 75 square feet, goes floor or area, or one space per three seats, whichever square. So I just wanted to get on record that how the restaurant and the, and I'm saying sub shop, but the other eatery, that's not technically a restaurant, would be defined.
What was the end of that? I didn't hear the end of that.
Oh, how each would be defined, the restaurant and the non-restaurant place.
But that is only a distinction. That's only a distinction in the parking schedule.
Yes, but...
Well, why are you coming up with a different definition of the current use versus Mr. O'Brien?
I'm using the Off-Street Parking Schedule, and he's using the definition, probably under definitions.
So...
Under the other party warrants.
Okay. So wouldn't it be fair to say, well, before we have our open discussion, does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Goodman, or our professionals, or Mr. Herbert? Because maybe what we could do is hear from the public at this point, and then we could come back and take a look at this, because I think we should focus in on whether this is a change in tendency or a change of use, given all the information that we already have, and if we could focus in on that, this could be a pretty simple decision. Could I ask? I guess, Kevin, has there ever been a set seven parking spaces for this use, or has a parking, in the public parking area, and it just happens to be able to accommodate seven, or eight, or six, or nine, or whatever? Is this a seven marked parking spaces for this use historically, or has it been more catch-and-catch, you know, in terms of parking?
Historically, to my knowledge, there have never been assigned spaces behind the building, but I defer to our commissioners who can tell me their personal experiences.
Is there anything previously approved that says, here are the X number of parking spaces dedicated only for this particular use?
No. My knowledge goes back to 1997, when I first started working with the board, and there has been none since then.
So, and that parking lot in the back, it accommodates eight? I mean...
Oh, it has...
Yeah, so it's almost, well, I just wanted to get that on the record, because I don't see, this doesn't seem to be a situation where there are eight or X number of locked-in parking spaces on-site that we normally deal with, and they're short. It seems to be there's a massive parking in the back, public parking, and that's been used, and whether there's a requirement for seven, or eight, or 30...
Eight, in this case.
Eight, that can be accommodated without a world-falling park.
Presumably, it has been accommodated all these years.
Okay, yeah.
I think as the chairman stated, if we did Bob's calculation for that entire block, or any random block on our Boulevard, we'd be...
They'd have to park at Best Buy. We'd be both...
Sure. So... Chair, I did a quick count using Google Maps, there's approximately 38 spaces in the back right now.
Right.
You want me to count the ones in the front? I could do that, too.
You know what, Christian, I think it's necessary at this point, I think we're focused in where we got to be. If there's no other questions, I'd like to have someone make a motion to open this portion of the meeting to the public.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Gramalde, second. Second by Mr. Mazzi, will it favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter, and this matter only, please come to the microphone at this point. If you're asking questions. Can you please speak loudly, state your name and address for the record?
My name is Kelly Olivera. I live on 12 North and 21st Street, and I wish everybody here considered the residents too. Myself in particular, we don't have a space to park our car, because our property doesn't have driveway, doesn't have garage. So we have to share the public space. It's been a nightmare. It has some other house there that doesn't have on the property space for parking, also has multifamily homes, doesn't have enough space for everybody, for their tenants, and we all need to share this space between the public space, which is owned by the city, also this street. Don't forget that we have a fundraiser, we have church, it's all a combination, and everybody uses the same space, so I just wish it taking consideration to the residents too, not just the business, because we've been so far with the noise, but I cannot get too that, but the parking space is a nightmare. I have a little kid, sometimes I have to park all the way to the 22nd, because my car is parked in there, or I have to live on Boulevard, and sometimes I need to leave all the way to the end of my block and walk with my baby, because I just can't park near to my house. So I just wish you guys can consider it the residents too. Unfortunately, yeah, like you said, all these houses and buildings were built a long time ago, and I guess it didn't play well, but it's affecting everybody now, so I just wish you take all in consideration, just not one person, or just business, and everybody as a whole, because we're committed. So we all need to be living there well. I think I deserve to live there well. I don't want to be bothered, and I want to feel like, oh, I have to go home and I have no parking space, or I need to go around and go up, or sometimes sit there and wait until somebody leaves, so I can actually get this spot and go home. Please, thank you.
Could you please spell your last name for me?
Olivera, O-L-I-V-E-I-R-A.
Thank you, Ms. President. Anything else?
No, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter, on this matter only? Please state your name and spell your last name for the record, please.
Annette Haddix, H-A-D-D-I-X, and I'm at 16 North 21st Street. And the parking situation, I've lived there practically my whole life, I grew up in the house that she lives in now, and the parking has been horrendous, they used to not allow us to park overnight in that parking lot. I'm fortunate, I have a long driveway, but I hate to tell you how many days I've come home and somebody was just running to get a sandwich, or just running to the liquor store, blocked my driveway. It's not just at night, and every time we've been up here, you know, where they wanted the variance for the parking, when they expanded the doctor's office upstairs, they don't take into consideration how many employees are also going to be added to that list. So besides having people coming in, you've got people working there, I have a very small parking spot between my house and the neighbors, it's not an assigned parking spot, it doesn't have the lines painted, but people are parked there all the time, and nobody's getting a ticket. Not that I want them to, but it makes it very difficult for me to get into my driveway. Two weeks ago, I beeped at a guy, and I beeped at a guy, I finally parked, went up and knocked on his window, and he rose, what? I said, I want to get in my driveway. Oh, is that why you were beeping at me? He said, come on. I mean, we've been through this for years, especially when there was no parking overnight over in the parking lot, and when you pass the, not you, but the board passed the ordinance about no parking when it's a snow day, and then we have restricted parking on our block one day, one side the other day, and it snows, where are we supposed to park, on our roof? So the parking has been horrendous for many, many years, and to add more, especially that lunchtime crowd, years ago, they said the population of Kenworth almost doubled with people just coming in for lunch, which is great for business, I'm all for business in town, but I have to live here, too. And to see Kelly taking her baby and coming out the door and looking around, she said, I don't remember where I parked the last time I came home. So it's just somewhere along the line, somebody has to consider the residents that live close by. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. President. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Pat.
State your name and spell your last.
Sherry Brennan, B-R-E, yes, B-R-E-N-N-A-N, and I'm at 19 North 21st Street, so two houses down from the restaurant. I was wondering, I have two parts, I was wondering if anybody took into consideration the outside tables that are on the sidewalk, when they're counting how many seats the restaurant has, because when it's nice out, there's easily another 25 people there.
Is that a question for me now?
I would hope that we would address it at some point when we're talking about parking, if we get into...
We can.
Yeah.
Well, we could ask Gary Goodman about that, the one thing I can tell you, when there's outside tables, there is a special permit that is provided at times to have outside seating. I don't know all the rules and regulations on how long to be out there, how long the permit is for, or what have you, but that is a special permit that is usually given, that I can tell you. However, we can also hear from our planner.
Ms. Brennan, are you referring to Ava's on 21st Street?
Yes.
That is not the subject of this meeting this evening.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant in front of the sub shop.
But should they ask for in front of the sub shop?
That's a different story.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. That's why I said to this application, only because, as you see, this could go pretty far down the pipe. You had a second part to your question?
Yes, comments about the parking on the street. So as you, Pat, if you're going the right way on the one-way street, after you pass the entrance to this parking lot that everybody's talking about, there is an end where the parking line stops, and then there's, I measured it, it's 65 inches to where the sidewalk starts. So it's not big enough for an actual car to fit there, but every time that I'm passing by this, I walk, I drive every day past this, it's occupied by a car. So that's an indicator to me that there's not enough room for people to park there. So then you're forced to walk almost into like a telephone pole and the wire that's holding the telephone pole to get around a car that's parked illegally in front of, adjacent to Ava's building right there. I also, I have a driveway with one spot, and in front of my house, there are two parking spots with the lines on them, and since I've been living there for four months, I think I've parked in front of my house maybe five times, because they're constantly occupied. So as soon as one car pulls out, one car pulls in. There's a high demand for parking, I can tell all my neighbors that don't have driveways and how much they're walking around, and the misery that they tell me that they're trying to park, because most of the houses there are multifamily houses, and they have more than one car, they have no parking, so it's a constant struggle for the neighborhood. And yesterday evening, I came home at 6 o'clock, and there was somebody parked across my driveway, so I couldn't park in my own driveway. So I called the police, and it took them two hours to come, because, you know, it's not a crucial thing, but that person got a ticket, and they said, actually, it could have had them towed if you wanted to, so I had to find a spot down the street myself. So there must be a crunch for parking if people are parking across people's driveways.
Ms. Brennan, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay. I did want to inform you that at the end of this application, we do open the meeting to the public on other issues, so you could speak at that time to anything else you wanted to speak. I didn't want you to just think we just gave you an abrupt halt.
Okay.
In fairness.
Yeah, I was just trying to keep what I was saying to the parking situation that is directly like two doors down from this activity.
Okay. I just want to address three very important things to you, Ms. Brennan, Ms. Haddison, and Ms. Olivera. This board and everybody who sits on here, including the chairman, all live in this town, and we all suffer the same problems, depending upon where we live, maybe a little bit easier for others, but if you are living in the area of the Boulevard, in any one of those streets that go down there, everybody has this problem, and it's been an ongoing problem. So that's why this denial by the zoning officer and the appeal by the applicant is very important to us, and we have to be very sensitive to what's going on in our borough. We do have businesses that have been here forever, and we don't want to lose our downtown district, and we also don't want to be detriment to our citizens...
Enjoyment of my own house.
Exactly. And I did ask a woman one time, when she was before me, and her husband, not just a woman, a woman and her husband, they were complaining about the noise, but they moved next to the sheet metal place. And I said, well, there's some noise that's going to be apparent when you move next to the sheet metal place, I can't do too much about that. The parking in Kenilworth is horrendous, and we know that. Why we're here tonight is to figure out if a parking application needs to go for a variance, whether we need to have a parking application for a variance, whether this is a change of use or change of tendency. I can tell you that no matter what we do tonight, that guy's going to park in that no zone, somebody's going to park in your driveway, my sister-in-law lives right around the corner, she calls the police just about every night because someone is blocking her driveway down the other block where there are no restaurants. So I feel for everyone, but we also have to make some good, sound decisions here in that everyone involved. If we rule in favor of the restaurants, that doesn't mean we rule against the citizens of the borough. It just means that we had to make a good, sound decision here tonight. If we rule the other way, that doesn't mean we rule against the restaurant, that means we have to move to another decision.
The last towns that I moved from, which were Wachung and Berkeley Heights, have valet parking at the restaurants that don't have sufficient parking on their site. Is that something that this town requires, valet parking perhaps?
I can't answer that question, I don't know what that is, that ordinance is about valet parking, but I don't think we have any place to put those cars to...
Okay.
Or we could just dance. I don't think we have a place to put those cars.
For instance, in Berkeley Heights, at the Trap Rock, there's not enough parking, so they park the cars in the vet next... So they park the cars in the vet next door and they park it at Taylor Rental across the street. And I'm sure they pay them for that. So they're, you know, they didn't have a spot, but they found one.
It is something that we could talk to our professionals about and get some answers.
We have other restaurants on the Boulevard that have deployed that method of parking themselves. Not by ordinance, but by need.
It probably makes it more enjoyable for the person who's coming to the restaurant because it's a hassle. To invite people to my house, I have to give them suggestions on how to try to hunt for a spot. Or if I happen to see one on my street before they arrive, I go and I take it myself and say, "Park in my driveway. I've found one." But yeah, it's definitely, it's planning.
Thank you so very much. I really appreciate it.
Okay.
Anyone else in the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, oh, I'm sorry, sir. Come on up. State your name and address and spell your last name for the record.
How are you doing? Rob Ramirez, last name, R-A-M-I-R-Z. I know most of yous have been here and lived in this town probably longer than me. But it was just something that stuck out how we kept going over, there was no seats, no seats, no seats. If you just do a simple Facebook search of Lenny &amp; John's in Kenilworth, there's pictures of tables in the restaurant. There's pictures of tables that were outside. So I know everybody can swear by that there was no seats there. There's been seats there before. Just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Anyone else? Seeing none, can we have a motion to close this portion to the public? Motion by Mr. Scadari. Seconded by Mr. Grimaldi. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. This... Do you have anything, Robert? Come on up to the microphone so we can hear you.
Swearing again, or?
No, no.
Okay.
You swear it up, bro.
After the meeting. No. I'm only kidding. I listened to a statement that our planner and our engineer said carefully. And I think they both have valid points. But I'm going to ask this board, before you guys make a motion, to approve my decision or overturn the in favor of the appeal. You know, whatever you guys decide, I totally respect. But I'd like to give you some examples. If we're going to classify it as a restaurant and there was only a few seats in the sub shop, and now Ava's, which is entrances on the side, and for the last year, they've been advertising Ava's in the sub shop that they can shop covering the whole window, which is another subject. When that connects to that business, that's an expansion of their permitted use. And it is the same use if we're going to classify it as restaurant, restaurant. But I'll give you a bigger example. Let's say Acme on the end of the Boulevard. They come front of this board for a site plan, but they want to put a 10,000-square-foot addition on the building. They didn't change, they're not a change of use, it's a change of tendency. Correct?
What do you mean?
Let me get to my point. Acme, if they come in front of this board and want to add 10,000 square feet on the building...
Beyond the footprint.
Beyond the footprint.
X-teer.
X-teer.
Right.
They need additional parking. So we're not going to make them follow the parking ordinance? If that was, as a scenario, we're not going to make them follow the parking ordinance? Because square footage, it requires more parking.
One scenario only generates another scenario. So what I think we need to do is step aside, Robert.
I am frank.
The thing is, is that if Acme, if Acme put an addition on the building, then of course they would need the required parking. But they also have the required parking behind the building where the gentlemen still own that property and they could park all back there. That's not part of Acme's property. So see how that scenario could get convoluted?
Yeah. So I mean, we'd have to do the math if parking may meet it or not. But my point is, you're expanding, and once you connect those two, and they're not a separate issue, it triggers parking calculations, even though if the seat count is there. We're only counting four seats for the sub shop. We have to take into consideration all the other shops. And in the other aspect, I'll bring this back. I couldn't find any language, but I'm sure some of yous up here will remember the hearing. When Ava came to this town, we welcomed them with open arms. And I helped them with long-term business here, very successful. The thought was to take over that space for a takeout pizza only, not representing 24 seats. And, you know, the ordinance says one thing, but I have to, and I apologize to the residents that was on my list to bring it up. We have to look at this as a whole. How that additional seating impacts the whole community in the commercial and in the residential, and the police and our DPW, what they have to deal with in foul weather. Even our first responders, fire and rescue, you know, during the snow time. It's hard to park up and down those streets. And if, you know, when the restaurants are full, you know, I'm very concerned about that. But I made my decision, if it's right or wrong. As is only also, I have to make a decision. I'm not always going to be right. I'm not always going to be wrong. But this is why we have this process and we're here in front of the board. So it's in your hands what you guys want to do.
Thank you, Robert. Mr. Goodman, did you have anything?
Well, let's not get too far afield here in dealing with Acme and 10,000 square foot. We're dealing with 479 square foot. It's 12 feet wide. Now, Ava's was allowed to come into Kenilworth. As everybody says, we want them to be successful. But if you want them to be successful, you're dealing in a building that has no parking. Parking is a fiction. A parking site plan to show where our parking is, the parking lot belongs to Kenilworth. The building is there, has been functioning with the parking lot for many years. The people who live near any downtown, you have to feel sympathy for the parking problems that are in Kenilworth, that are in Frankfurt, that are all busy communities, have the same issues, and they have the same residents that suffer. But the focus tonight is on 479 square foot. Yes, he wants to have a private room, a little quiet area where he can have meetings to enhance his business. Everybody says, "Ava's, we welcome you with open arms." Well, they're there already. You want them to be successful. This little ancillary space, which is a conversion from a sub shop, which we can show pictures of people having lunch there, eating at tables. It is an eatery, it is a restaurant. And now it's going to be a more upscale restaurant. And will hopefully serve to make Ava's a successful and viable part of your community for years to come. This is what you want on the Boulevard. This is what Kenilworth is known for in the county. Your fine eateries. People know you for this. This only enhances what you have created. To suggest that we need to go through all of these machinations here to determine whether or not this is an eatery versus a takeout, I think is a miscarriage of what your purpose is. As a zoning board, you need to take a look at the big picture. The picture here is Ava's is here. You want this 479 square foot to be a vacancy? It's been vacant for a year. How many more years do you want it to just sit there? I don't think that's what you want. I do think you want it to be viable as far as parking is concerned. Certainly, there are recommendations from this board to the township committee, or rather, the mayor and council, telling everyone that they have a parking problem. I think they do. Whether this 479 square foot with 24 seats is going to exacerbate the problem, I don't know. But I would ask you to allow this expansion to exist, to basically allow the conversion of this space into the Ava's meeting room and overturn the zoning official's determination that it needed to go further in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brennan. Let me just elaborate on that a little bit. One of the things that I also am very concerned with is vacancy on the Boulevard. As we come into our downtown district, we have more than enough stores with newspaper on the windows and empty dial boxes. That doesn't mean anybody could just come in and do whatever they want to do. However, taking a real good, hard look at all the testimony from everyone, and Bob, I do think he did a great job with this. I'm really, really saying that. And I mean that sincerely. However, I also think that because this establishment has been here for so many years, and it's always been a restaurant, and it's always had that function, and it is an extension of Ava's. It doesn't impact it at all. It stays the same. I think it's a change of tendency, not a change of use. And I think if we approved your denial, we would be doing something detriment to our Boulevard in downtown. I understand the people from the public talking about their parking and everything else. I don't think, as Mr. Goodman said, it would impact whether, if it was vacant or not. I don't think people are going to be rushing to the front of that Boulevard as they are right now, already doing that. It doesn't work that way. On the grand scheme of things, I would, unless someone else has something to say about this, I would ask a motion be made to overturn the zoning officer's decision on the denial for this establishment and move forward. Yes, Mr. O'Brye...
A little later in the game than I thought. My apologies, I should have said this before.
Yes, sir.
I want to commend Mr. Herbert for doing his job.
He did do a great job. And that's why this was a very tough decision, Kevin.
Yes.
Not a decision yet.
As you may recall, I have an adjunct professor at Rutgers who I teach zoning officer courses as well as planning. And when we teach the zoning officers, one of the mantras that's drilled into them is, "When in doubt, deny." So that if the ordinance is confusing in any way, or if one passage is not clear with the other passages, the job of our zoning officers is to say, "No. Let it go to the board. Let those people above my paid scale take care of it and figure it out." So Mr. Herbert has done his job. My word commended for.
Thank you. I want to echo those words. There's a good friend of mine, Ralph Brandon, once said. So I don't mean that in a joking way. I do think he did a fantastic job with this. And it's a very, very difficult decision for us to make up here. Sorry, Louis?
No, no. Bob, by making a decision, if it's appealed, I think it causes this board to think hard about issues that maybe we didn't think hard about before. Things that are now coming to the front. What I wanted to put on the record was that this issue seemed to have been triggered by Bob's view that a site plan was needed because of a parking variance, that the parking requirement was short. But based on what I heard, this was never a situation like an Acme, where you have X number of onsite parking spaces. And because of an expansion, you need more onsite parking space if you can't get them. That would mean a parking variance that would trigger a site plan. I don't, from what I heard, we don't have that here. There was public parking on an adjacent lot or nearby. There were never set seven spaces. And it's not as though they need a variance for what they had. They never really had that. It's catch-as-catch can with public parking. So I don't know if there was a variance needed. They're just going to have to find another spot in that public lot. There were comments made about valet parking. There are a lot of establishments in a lot of towns that accommodate, especially in urban areas, they don't have any parking, so they use valet. In other towns where they have a parking authority, if a use, a proposed use is within X number of feet of a public, of a missing parking area, that's fine. Normally, someone will go out and get a letter from the parking authority saying, "Yeah, you're okay." I think they use the same letter every time. "Yeah, you're okay with 50 parking spaces." So the fact that there's public parking nearby is good. And it happens in a lot of towns where you can use that. The last thing is, and then I'll stop. Because we've been dealing with a permitted use, it was and it is, the law doesn't require a board to consider, legally consider, parking situations removed from the application. This is permitted, it's onsite. Public parking issues are in the purview of the governing body, not the planning board. If this was a use variance and they were coming in with a whole new application, these considerations would be critical in terms of how much parking you're going to have, where it's going to go. This board would have a lot of jurisdiction and a lot of leeway in terms of considering tight parking. In this particular case, it's really, it's permitted. And the board would be limited in what we could do on this particular application. So I don't know if there was a parking variance. It seems to me very vague if what was even needed on this because of the public parking issue.
Correct. So that's, I just wanted to put that on the record. So with that being said, I would like someone to make a motion to overturn Mr. Herbert's denial and approve the...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Trying to make a quick statement.
I didn't see you there, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Basically, the board has two pieces. One, the definition, and if it's a change of use. And two, are the calculations that Mr. O'Brian also put together, even if it was that we were talking about one spot? So to the residents that came up, you didn't waste your time. But we are talking about the definition of it would be a change of one spot, which I believe you were going to before, earlier in this hour. So again, although I disagree with our definition, and we'll do something with that. That's not for this matter.
That's not for this matter. We all work on that.
And as I said, that I would say, based upon those facts that were presented to us, and that's all we could go upon, not our feelings or anything else, but based upon those facts, I would make the motion to overturn this.
Okay. The motion is made by Mr. Grimaldi. Second?
I'll say.
Second by Mr. Mazzio. I want Mr. Goodman and the applicant to know that this would have to be a majority in this instance. We have six board members, so you would have to have at least four yeses. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Should the motion also include Mr. Chairman's direction to the zoning officer to grant a site plan exception?
That goes without saying, yes. The board would do that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it would be...
That would come from Mr. Ray. So again, a motion made by Mr. Grimaldi, seconded by Mr. Mazzio. Roll call, please.
Mr. Pissarina?
Yes.
Mr. Grimaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
Mr. Kalella?
Yes.
Mr. Scuderi?
Yes.
And Mr. Herbert area?
Yes.
Congratulations. And Robert, again, very good job. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Okay, I just want everyone to know that we're still in session. Any new...
Regulations.
No wall business, or is there a wall business?
No.
Okay. Any new business that we need to speak of? Am I out of line here? No, I'm sorry. Zoning appeal, we did. I'm sorry. I went out of order, I'm sorry. Any comments for the gooder to board? Okay, I do have one. Hey, folks out there, we're still in session, if you don't mind, please. Okay? So, I do have a comment for the gooder to board. Okay? And that is, this is our last meeting of the year, and I think our board is absolutely fantastic, and we've come a long way. And to the new members that are sitting up here tonight, we're doing a fantastic, you guys are doing a fantastic job. And we've had a pretty tough year, right down to Mr. Shelby losing his brother, was it yesterday, so our condolences are for Mr. Shelby's brother. And I want to wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I'm looking forward to our reorg meeting, and I got to say, Bob, great job tonight, and I think all of you add a certain amount of expertise in the mix all the time. Thank you, Christian, for doing a great job tonight. Thank you, Kevin, as always, and Luke, you're right on target, gentlemen. And Kathy, thank you, and happy holidays to all.
Thank you.
Happy South Florida. Now, I can open the meeting to the public.
Okay.
Okay, someone make a motion?
Open the meeting to the public.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Scuderi. All in favor? Aye. Robert, Herbert?
Yes, Mr. Herbert. Thank you. To this board, to this board, I want to say, you know, thank you for listening to my testimony. Thank you to the applicant and their professionals testifying. I think the hearing was very thorough tonight, but I want this board to know, in case anybody on this board has the minute doubt, as your zoning officer, in all the years I was a zoning officer, zoning is a tough call, because as the chairman said earlier, all of us can read this ordinance and interpret it 10 different ways. So, the zoning officer has to make that decision by law, and it's not easy, guys, it's not easy. And, you know, maybe I put some of my personal feelings in here, and I looked at the whole picture. I was looking at the residents, I was looking at the adjoining businesses, and I'm well aware of the hard parking spot. But it was a tough decision for me to deny this applicant, and I did take into consideration it was only 500 square feet. It was just a tough call, and when in doubt, Mr. O'Brien hit it now.
That's exactly what we tell all the zoning officers. If you're in doubt, deny. And let the board decide.
And that's where my conversation was, and I will continue to do that. Board members, I want you to, you know, to realize that, you know, I thought I did a thorough job, some valid points came out, and you guys made the decision, and I respect it, you know, and I just hope that you guys, when I'm right or wrong, you guys respect my decision.
Because the decisions that you received tonight showed the respect.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for it. You got it, Robert.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Did you want to speak before the public?
I just wanted to get my...
You know, he's a little well-winded. If I do it, it's there, I don't mean to keep going. Do you want to end some of that? Close the meeting?
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Anybody else in the public I'd like to close? Meeting is closed by Mr. Grimaldi, seconded by Ms. Scuderi. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, I was going to close the public.
Oh, that was a... Now, meeting, meeting... I'll make a motion to adjourn. Seconded by Mr. Kalella. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Merry Christmas.